Selectment meeting recorded. All three selectmen are present. Town administrator is present. Liam Martell is taping and recording for the benefit of the public. Linda Nickerson will upload it to YouTube probably by the end of today. So, that being said, we've got some old business with some previous meetings. I'll make a motion to approve the seven P M. Riddle Minutes about October twenty first as of end of December. Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I'll make a motion to approve the eight thirteen P M. Eight thirteen P M. Oh, yeah. Eight thirteen P M. On public minutes of October twenty first. On second.
What we're thinking at home time. Yeah, on second bond's motion. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nothing to discuss there.
Okay, I'm gonna open up to public comments, so if you're not on the agenda tonight, if you have anything you want to say, we also open up at the end of the meeting as well. Anybody have anything from the beginning of the meeting? You're on the agenda?
Yes, I'm gonna read public comments. Don Larson reached across Dunbar.
Okay.
I want to let you know that starting next week, my phone company's gonna be putting up fifty eight flags, most of them right here on General John Stark Highway, Robert Rogers School Street, and we're paying for the flags with donations from the citizens of Dunbar. And so what I'd like to do on November eleventh is have Rivers Additive, the selectmen, come to the November eleventh ceremony for Veterans Day.
Yep.
And accept the flags for the town of Dunbar residents.
I think we can do that. Leon, since we're accepting the donation of the flags, do we need to make a consensus or motion yet tonight?
There is a value to it.
Right.
So, I think you had, what, eight hundred and something dollars value?
No, the value is roughly three thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
Flags, poles, mounts.
Do you want me to put it on next week's agenda? Do you have time to do it?
If we knew we should, so that we will accept the donation for that amount, and then I'll plan on coming that day on the eleventh to accept them.
Okay.
Mike, you said you're out of town, right? Okay. Well, if you wanna come.
Yeah, I mean, if you would come here, that'd be great.
We're gonna have, the Sons of American Revolution are gonna be firing a musket salute at the end of the program there on Thomas. And I put it, filled out a form yet last night to see if Governor Sanuno would come. So, you know, I don't know if he can find Dunbar, but I hope so.
Don's been in previous meetings, and I do like going through a lot of these towns in New Hampshire and seeing the flags through there, Fourth of July, and different, different months of the year, shows a lot of patriotism in the town, I think.
Hudson, Litchfield, Hudson's up on Memorial Day, and they're still up now. They leave them up for the whole summer, take them down after Veterans Day.
Well, we can, we can do that, but what we were looking to make them special is we'll put them up for Veterans Day, and we'll start, you know, about two weeks if they'll be up. Take them down the week of the fourteenth, probably, and then we'll store them for the winter, and then put them up for Memorial Day through D-Day, which is June, so it'll be about three weeks that they'll be up. Take them down, or we may leave them up for the Fourth of July, you know, through June, through June, and we'll have to see. And then Labor Day, and then Veterans Day again. And in September, though, for Labor Day, put them up in time for Old Home Day through Labor Day.
And so now you speak to the same problem they have in Litchfield, Hudson. It's a lot of manpower to put them up and down, so they put them up, and they leave them up for the whole summer, right through Veterans Day, and they take them down. And it actually looks pretty good when it's going down, huh, three A? You see those flags for quite a ways, so.
Well, would you prefer they stay up all year?
Um.
Or maybe all through, through Veterans Day?
Well, because it doesn't make sense, because you're looking at the labor of putting them up, taking them down, and folding them, and putting them away, and bringing them out, so you, you have a lot of handling.
Yeah. I wouldn't mind doing that.
My, my partnership is with the phone company.
Yeah, I would check with that.
They're, they're putting them up, so that would be ones up, ones down, you know, if we do it that way.
One say do it six times, I might say two.
Well, the other thing, too, is your handling.
Right.
And every time you handle something, you know, it doesn't take long to.
A little tear here, a little tear there.
Well, this is, uh, the flags are high quality, well sewn, so they, they, maybe take three months there. You know, I'd love to leave them up and that myself and that, because I just think it's such a, you know, so beautiful. And that, so if, you know, I don't have a problem with it. Let me talk to the committee, hello?
Think about it, just think about it. Because it's less handling, and even though they're, they're strong, they don't withstand the weather better than they withstand constant handling.
Yeah. I think the labor issue is a thing, too. You have to volunteer company on it a whole for six times. Right, so two times, right, at six. We'll see what they say, see how they wanna handle it.
Just think about it, Don.
Yeah, we put, we got three inch screws that we're putting in versus the two inch flag screws that came with the mounts, so we're putting in a, a, a three inch deck screw, and that way they're solid, you know, when trucks go up. But we'll keep an eye on them, and, you know, they, they should, they should weather very good, they should be good for three years, you know, doing it that way, and then we'll replace them.
Well, I guess you have consensus on the board, if you need to leave them up, you can.
Okay, well, thank you.
That's more important, I guess. Anything else, Don?
Uh, we're porting the pads, should be in place now in Page's Corner for the benches in the cremains garden, and then there's a shortage of cobblestones, so we're just missing enough cobblestones that's gonna line along the driveway there. And once they're in place, why, then that, the benches are gonna be delivered on Monday, and Roger Rice is gonna bring his tractor over, and we're gonna, you know, install them, and, you know, that'll be pretty much a complete three warrant articles that we have at the cemetery. And looking for new projects. There's plenty of them out there.
All right.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Thanks for your hard work, and we do have a letter in here from the, ever source in the telephone company.
Yeah.
You know, give me permission to put them up on the board, so.
And all the email that came with it, why, he appreciated what we were doing for the veterans and, you know, the flags and that from River Source, so.
Yeah, well, thanks for going through all that hard work. Okay, coming back to town business, we've got Clem on here from the Dunbar Elementary School, the chairman, he's giving us an update on the school grounds and the school year.
Thanks for having me. I'm in Dunbar. So, the grounds, I think, went pretty well, on their experience. I mean, it was an improvement, and a very tough improvement, but certainly was.
Much cleaner and bagged up nice and neat.
I did make sure that our accounting department is aware that they're not to release the last installment until we're certain that all the winter cleanup, or fall cleanup has been taken care of.
Yeah, that's important. Owen, Owen was really happy. They were good, they were mowing on the weekends, you know, when school started. There was a few times I think they were letting it go a little long, but they responded.
Yeah, I think ours was a little long a couple times. It wasn't that thick, and they were probably waiting for it to thicken up a little.
Yeah, which I mean, during the summer is kind of, you know, like the exact opposite of last summer. No, last summer, this past summer, we got a dozen.
Now, there were some piles against the road.
Oh, like he hasn't done the fall cleanup yet?
Oh, he hasn't? All the way is blew off.
Yes, yes, yes.
From the last few days, I believe it, sure.
I said, yeah, just yesterday, the yard was full.
Yeah.
And then today they're not gone, they're all gone.
Maybe a week or so ago it was full, those all blew away.
Can you send them away to my house?
This is the windiest section in town, right on the top.
That's unbelievable, I thought they came, they, oh, yeah.
No, they're not.
So, I think, you know, if your guys are up for it, heading back next year.
I think it's a multi-year contract.
Oh, good, great.
Good for three years.
Good, oh, that makes it good.
Yeah. Got a real mine for tree.
Yeah, oh, they're good.
When you check over there around your building, a lot of stuff does, like, you check against the wall of the police and fire.
Absolutely.
Just because that's kind of.
You want, you want us to blow them all up against?
Right from here over to there.
No, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that you.
I just wanna make sure that doesn't be kind of a little spot again that.
They, you know.
Get touched.
Or gets over, like, I should say. The other, I, I called and left a message for Jeff Crosby, because we had, you know, how we did the school improvement, we did the new parking lot back there, expanded it when we did the new road, the fire road out back. I asked him about finally getting it striped, because we haven't had it striped in a long time, so not that that's urgent, because they're finding their parking spaces, but it might make some sense to do that at some point in the future.
We've talked about striping out here for the last six years, so good luck.
Sure.
All right, it's just. We go back and forth, we don't want stripes, because it's a country area, and we do want them, we're just gonna do the handicap.
Yeah, well, the old, I mean, you know, because that's where the, the school staff parks, parks right there, and not, not that they can't figure it out, but it might be nice that if we can squeeze in a few more parking spots. And then, the other business that we have going out, I don't know if you read the email summary from Dr. Cascaden that I forwarded, you know, because he does very good updates for the districts of S A U sixty seven, and so that's why I like to forward those to you guys, but two big things that are gonna be on our warrant this year, which is later because of the school vacation, you know, that we just couldn't do it at the end of there, because people are gone, including our staff. The two big things that are gonna be on there, other than our budget, obviously is one of them, that's standard, is gonna be the teacher's contract is up for renewal this year, and those negotiations are going well, we expect that to be a pretty standard increase for that, and then the other one is our area agreement with Bo, which is, that negotiation is almost coming to a close, you know, so pretty much it's been tentatively agreed to everything to principle, but we haven't finalized the details.
And how are the numbers looking there?
The numbers there, every, the calculations are gonna be the same. There's two things that were on there that were being, that needed to be fine tuned. One was had to do with the aides, and it was, they thought that every aide had to be charged out on like a per diem basis, unless it's a specialized one-on-one aide. Those are supposed to be going into the general calculation of the area school tuition, so that was clarified, even though in the agreement it was there, but they weren't doing it correctly. And the other thing that was in, and it was more of a correction, was, oh, my God, I can't remember that. And then there's another thing with the capital improvement fee, which is similar to what other districts have, and a rental charge, that we had to negotiate on, and that raised a little bit, so like most things, that would be going up a little bit, not to a point extreme. And the one thing that we're looking at is a fifteen year term. That, again, has not been finalized, so we'd rather it be longer.
So, that was our agreement, it would be for fifteen years?
Yes.
Still ten.
Right.
Okay. Clem, when you guys are negotiating wages, do you use the Bureau of Labor Statistics at all, or do you not, or, just curious?
Do you mean for the school contracts?
Right.
What we do, so with that one, Dunbar is very low relative to other towns in the area, and over the past two or three cycles, we've been trying to get into an area where we're competitive, because we need to be able to attract teachers, and we need to be able to retain teachers. So, in the past, we've been doing three, 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 you know, as step, or, well, as step increases within the grid, and then there's those increases that are year to year, and that's why we do that, because, you know, and recently, I mean, I'm sure you know, everybody's having a hard time hiring, period, and it's, you know, like, we don't, the school, school districts don't have bus drivers, and so we had a few openings this past year, we fill them, but it's not like we had an overwhelming amount of candidates, and reportedly, we've lost some people to, some good staff to, you know, hire in districts. So, it's always something that comes into play. So, the Bureau of Labor isn't really something that, you know, goes on, it's more of like what the market is around.
Right, but you can get it, so you can isolate it to New Hampshire, you can use Northeast, but you go right to New Hampshire and get those different industries that you cover, you know, in, in the school system. I'm just curious, because, you know, that's what we use here when we're trying to set revenue, the COLA increases or C P I, which is going wacky this year, too, so. It's something which we thought maybe sometimes were lower, but then when we've checked around facility, some of the positions we have here, we're doing fairly well, you know, and we just give you a barometer of how you're doing with the rest of the state.
Well, that's what we have, our business administrator actually looks at every single district in the area that's similar to us, and then that's, that, I mean, we don't need the Bureau of Labor, those are all public documents, so all that information is directly available, and Dwayne is very good with numbers, we'll look at those, and he'll be able, I mean, because we're a special, you know, we're not a K through twelve district, we're not a very big district with K through six, so we're not necessarily have to be as high paying as somebody that has to recruit, you know, like a physics teacher. You know, we don't have that, but we still need to be able, for that K through six population of teachers, we need to be able to get teachers in the door, and we also wanna make sure that we keep them, if they're good. So, you know, we're, we're still, I think, on the lower side throughout, you know, this area in the state, obviously, but.
One of the things you have going for is typically a smaller classroom.
Yeah, that used to be the case, like clearly the case, it's not so much the case anymore. I mean, it's not that they're big classes, I mean, it's, what we have going for is is that we have a small school. And, you know, like the joke around D P S K, and it's a Dunbar advantage, you know, it's not, you don't have this massive thing, you know, you know everybody, the teams work well together, you know, and you're in first, second, third, fourth, fifth, you know, sixth, all those work well together, and there's two teachers per grade, and it's not that, but it's, yeah, that is an advantage to some regard, you know, and the flip side is, because you're so small, you have a lot of extra duties that you have to do, whereas a, you know, a real size school, you might not have to do, like doing parking lot, or, you know, there's, it's, it's a busy place.
Yeah. Okay, well, thanks for the update, you have anything else for us?
Uh, there is, I'm aware that there is a bonfire that some students have put together for Veterans Day in lieu of the Veterans Day breakfast that they typically do at the school, and so this is a group of students whose father, one of them is on the Dunbar Fire Department, and they're working with Fred Mullin, and they're gonna have a little bonfire with picking out and marshmallows, and I think that happened a little bit on today.
Were they doing that on the fire department, or?
Yeah, they were in a gas fire department. Fred, Fred's in charge.
No, I mean, the other residents are going in, or?
Oh, at the ball field.
At the ball field, okay.
And I'm sure that'll be coming up, but it's, it's kind of a neat project that some kids spearheaded and decided to put together, and.
One question on that, we were working with Shelley, getting her the list of veterans, so the breakfast is off?
From what I understand, so don't take my word for it, I hadn't gotten an invite to it, or I haven't been made aware of it, so I'm not, I, I thought that, I, I don't, if Shelley said something else, Shelley's the one that knows.
All right, all right, I'll, I'll check the draft, and then make sure. And then can I ask one more question on that, that agreement that we're looking at with Bo, is that something you posted on your website of any sort?
It's draft only, but we will certainly post it when it's finalized.
Okay, so I wouldn't, would you have a problem posting it on the town website as well? I think the more people know about it.
Absolutely, no, we'll have a public hearing about it, you know how. Jeff, Jeff is on that, the committee with us, and it's actually the area plan review board, and so that's been going on, and we've posted all those meetings, the public meetings, nobody comes, but, you know, it's not tax, I mean, but it's, yes, that will be up, and that will be something that we review thoroughly with everybody, it's not gonna be, you know, it's a, that's a, that's a warrant article, and that's, maybe.
Okay.
You got any questions?
Just out of curiosity, does Goff, Goff Town express any interest knowing that our contract is up?
Uh, they haven't, directly.
Okay, just out of curiosity.
And I, you know, there's, if, you know, there's always, and we're a small enough district, and we're not as small as we used to be, but I do know there's, I mean, I'm sure Goff Town would be interested, and I know probably John Stark would be interested, I mean, Hackney would probably be interested, but right now, we've got.
Bo seems to be working well, then.
I would, in my opinion, Bo is a wonderful place for our middle and high school students to go, and the S A U there is very, very, very good. They, you know, Dr. Cascaden knows what he's doing, he's very responsive, whereas in the past, in previous things, we were kind of ignored, you know, we were small, and it was, um.
That's refreshing to hear.
You know, we, we have, you know, Dwayne Ford is the business administrator, he's fantastic, he knows his numbers inside and out, he can, he's really, really good, and I can't say enough about him, we have a director of curriculum, Shannon Bartlett, who came, came in, and she was integral in being able to get all of our kids, we're lucky that we have, you know, kids that they all have Google Chromebooks, or, you know, that kind of stuff, so that during the pandemic, that first, you know, couple months, and that March, we could actually do the remote learning, it was like, it wasn't easy by any means, but we were fortunate enough as a district to be able to have a model come up with that is workable, and was able to happen through that March, and then all through last year, when we had to go remote or go, you know, hybrid, it was very important, so she's good. And we also have a director of student services, Marcy Kelly, who's just absolutely fantastic. I mean, she does, works really well with Laura Landry in there, who's our student services coordinator, which is special education, and they're, they work very well top to bottom, you know, with all of our kids in the grade school, middle school, and high school, and they're, you know, that, that's a great team, I, you know, they do a very good job for us and by us, they're not, you know, we're not, we're not a lesser priority.
Great, it's great to hear.
You know, we're a smaller community. And I will say, we're very much, of course, it's a three million dollars, but we're very much wanted. We, it's a lot of tuition that we pay, but we get what we pay for.
Good. Okay, thank you for coming, Clem.
Absolutely.
Appreciate the update.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
I, just what you just said, I think, I think towns probably would really like to have your opinion on that, just what you did, that nutshell, if you do it editorial or anything like that, your opinion on what you just described is, would be perfect. Is it just?
Yeah, no, I mean, I mean, it is, I think it's important to people to know that, and I, you know, I have kids in school, but I talk to people who have kids in school, because not everyone fits well, and not every, you know, student is a, you know, has the best time in high school, and we've had, you know, students here and there that don't do well for whatever reason, but by and large, what I hear is that the kids really enjoy it, and I don't know if anyone's, I mean, I'm sure high school these days is much different from when I went to high school, where the most technical class, it was a drafting class, and it was a ruler, these kids are doing things that are, it's just unbelievable, I mean, they're basically doing life on like with biology, and they have CAD programs, and, you know, three.
What I would recommend is to use those as opening remarks at the school board meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so that's spot on, it's good to hear.
Thanks, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
All right, take care.
All right, you guys, stay too late, I gotta curfew, Don.
We've got the garden club here, Nora.
Yeah.
From Nora, and you're here to give us an update on Halloween?
Yes, um, could I ask you to share your thoughts about Halloween, um, seeing I'm back here again, you know?
Well, I think Mike had talked to a couple departments, and what we were hoping to have is not have that big tent that was originally scheduled there, and I think in talking with you, they were in a meeting I was at last night, so they were gonna have a smaller tent just to hand out the candies, no?
No, what we want to do is, we're not gonna have a tent at all.
Not at all.
Because what I understood was that the selectmen did not want, you know, a tent, period, so we've already decided that we would give candy out on the bandstand, from the bandstand.
Oh, okay.
And probably spread out a couple of tables that were spaced out enough, and have candy on those tables as well, and we'll do some decorations, not in the scale like if we had a tent.
Yeah.
Around the bandstand, and maybe around the tables, just make it festive for the children, and make it enjoyable, so that's our plan as of now, if that's.
Yeah, I think that sounds good, those are some of the things we talked about. I also watched A B C just before we got here, Channel Nine News had the Rosin Report on last year, because of the COVID, they considered these events at a medium risk, and this year they're downgraded to low risk, because they've learned that during those outdoor functions, there's not a high risk on the impact on the town, so. Yeah, I think you're, as long as you're doing the spacing, you're encouraging spacing, that's important, that's important.
And because of the crowds there, I know I would wear a mask, even though I'm fully vax, vaccinated, I would definitely.
I, I still have a problem with an organized event.
Yeah.
Where everybody stays like it had been in the past.
Yeah.
I know, because I brought my great granddaughter, and, you know, there was a lot of people there, because children are twenty-eight percent of the hospitalization right now, but they don't have any protection.
That's right.
And they, they just got that back online with the COVID updates, so from Sunday to yesterday, they had eleven deaths, and today you have seven deaths. Now, you know, nobody advertises whether or not they've had the shot, so we don't know who's co-main with whoever, so I, you know, I'm looking for a bit lower, uh, impact type event where kids, if they wanna get candy, but, you know, I don't wanna have an organized event where you're really, it just takes one, whether it's an adult or a child, it just takes one, and that takes the flavor right out of celebrating all the way.
Absolutely, we're not so, so, any encouraging people to stay, you know, um, it is, you know, handing out candy, you know, exchange greetings and have a good night, that's our plan, and I mean, the public, when they come, they may have a different, um, plan, but I mean, if they get a bag of candy, they're not gonna get another one, so.
Right, yeah, as long as.
So, it's gonna be definitely very low key in comparison to two years ago, you know, where the common was full.
And like you say, it may fill up for a period of time, but if there's nothing there for them to.
Yeah.
Stay for, they're not gonna stay around forever.
Yeah, we're not gonna have popcorn, a couple years ago, we had hot dogs, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
You know, so we needed the tent for all of that, you know.
Okay.
So, can I, can I say something?
Sure.
Um, my name's Ted Hood, I'm the, uh, lead mentor for the Little Robotics Club, so we're a four age club, this is Vanessa, she's the president of the club, um, we asked the, the college to see if we could get a space out here, uh, because for us, it's like a, a, a very amazing opportunity to be able to get right in front of kids, to be able to get more kids on the teams, right now, we have about twenty, twenty-three kids in our club, they build robots between eighteen inches to a hundred and fifty pound robots, so, and two different teams. A tent for us means we can bring our robots, we can at least have it on display, we have no intent to actually run it, we only let kids, the people drive it, we're not doing that, we just wanna be able to show it off, be able to talk about it, be able to, uh, kind of show what we're doing, right, to help keep the, keep the club growing. We are not allowed to, to, to have the program within the school district, like most teams in the state, most teams in the nation, most teams in the world apart from schools, Bo will not let us do it at school. So, we formed our own club to do it, and the only way we can actually get kids and mentors is events like this. We were at Old Home Days, you saw our orange tent, we were asking, the orange tent we plan on bringing, um, just so we had some sort of cover and place to like make decorations and things to kind of attract people to wanna come see what we're doing. Um, if you, if you want kind of an idea of what we were planning on doing, she can explain it, because she was working with the team to kind of set all that up, um, but. Um, but for us, it, it is kind of a, a critical thing for us to be able to, to do that. Now, our goal was to keep people out of the tent, was mainly for our stuff and our decorations and the kids that are on the team. But under four H rules, we are not like, the reason we're, you know, wearing a mask is we're here representing the four H, we cannot be in an indoor facility without a mask on. So even in there, we'd be wearing masks, so it, it, you know, that's what we're allowed within the four H, and that's an organization centered around children. That's the national rule right now, indoors, you wear masks, outdoors, actually even in a tent or even in a barn, you don't have to wear a mask.
Yeah, I was unaware when they, when they talked about having that and having a tent, I was thinking that they were gonna be playing, you know, the with the different, um, robots, you know, against each other, whatever you guys do. So I was thinking it was gonna be a lot of people getting together tightly under that tent, and I think that's what the other selectmen thought as well.
Yeah, we, we don't wanna, we don't wanna do that just because, A, it's dark, right? We don't plan on having black lights on the tent. Um, but, you know, the whole goal is to just get people interested, to know, to let people know we're here. Um, handing out candy, we have come to the community, we collected, um.
Candy with an application form, right?
True.
To add, obviously, like, the most that we were thinking of, like, the, most of our people that we would, even, like, if we did set the tent, maybe we have, like, multiple ways of setting it up, so like one idea being, uh, with only us in the tent, uh, a second idea was, like, make it a very, very open kind of, like, a person, like, we have, like, one group walk-through, and that candy, it can be, it's like, just like, just a kind of decorations, we have not really much interaction type things.
So you'd be able to create the six-foot social distancing?
Yes.
To allow groups to come through?
Yeah, and so they, the kids have actually even created the device that, uh, they got it out there last year, well, out, down the street last year, where, uh, they made a device where you can open the bag, dump it in a, in a bucket, and then they turn the handle, and it delivers candy six feet away.
That's pretty cool.
And so that was their solution to try to be able to deliver candy and, and keep, keep following going. They put their, their plans out online, and a whole lot of people all around actually made their own devices and sent pictures, so. Um, they're, they're planning on bringing that as part of the, of the display, so. Um, I mean, they, they brought it to the fair and actually won an award for their creativity on it, so. Um, that was the plan, is to bring that, put it in the tent, have the, the chute coming out the other of the tent, and, and be able to deliver the candy that way.
With those social distancing rules, I don't really have a big issue with it. Um, I'd like to hear from the rest of us, and I can see what they think.
I think they're, at least they're addressing the, uh, the concern about, my, uh, my concern was, you have all like, like, thirty kids congregating around the, the event. And that, that was, in my mind, would be a welcome. But I think if there's gonna be a single file going in and out, I, I can't, I'm not, I'm not I'm a parent, but I don't wanna be managing other kids at the same time. I think as parents have to show some responsibility here too. But, and they gotta control their children, but at the same time, you can help them by facilitating good flow through your facility and keeping social distancing. If you can do that, I, I can, I don't see much issue with that.
I understand what your thoughts, Paul.
Yeah, same thing, if it's, if it's not organized where you have a congregation, uh, cause, you know, our number's going up in New Hampshire because our, you know, our vaccination rate is, is just at sixty percent, hasn't increased much, and now it's affecting younger kids, you know, and that's our concern is the, the five to seventeen-year-olds don't even have a chance at saying they want a shot or not, you know, and.
The thing is, the sad thing is, young people who will survive this, the infectious problem, but the thing is, what's, what's around the corner, a couple, uh, several weeks down the road? You know, grandparents are gonna be coming for Thanksgiving, you know, it's gonna be good get-together, family get-togethers, and what we don't wanna do is create an event where we're sending out kids affected, taking, taking out their grandparents.
Yeah, trust me, the last thing we want is, is, uh, anything to happen, because the, what ended up happening to us last year, um, we, we got through a, a season, so they, they won the Vermont State Championship in twenty twenty. The very next day, they were the finest team in New Hampshire, um, so they lost to the world champion by six points. I mean, they were headed to world championships, it got canceled because of COVID.
I'm just surprised why Bo won't even embrace you.
No, I'm trying.
Okay.
Going to the, to the other thing, I think it might have to do with the fact that they have a virtualized team, which is slightly different than yours, uh, versus a little bit more leadership-based, well, a lot more leadership-based, and um, I just think that they want humans to address that.
So that, having, having things shut down for us would be, uh, a really bad.
I think if you can assure us of just keeping some social distancing, um, and giving some handouts, uh, obviously it's a membership, uh, drive for you too.
Right.
Uh, giving out candy, giving out a handout is one thing, but what you gotta avoid as, as the leader of the group here, you gotta make sure that we don't create an area where you do get kids coming around, and what's your contingency when you have a thousand kids coming down? You, you might have to say, oh, the machine's shut down for now, you know?
Yeah, we're actually not gonna run the robots, right? So the, the robot is, we'll have a, uh, we have a little box that it sits on, and people can look at it. Uh, we didn't have a problem with it last year.
To me, it's almost like a trunk or treat, you're gonna have a display.
Right.
Candy given out, and showing, showing your wear.
Right.
You're just gonna be vigilant that you're not gonna get a fifteen, twenty kids around that little wear.
Yeah.
Okay, that's my concern, and if you can assure me that you're gonna be vigilant for that, go forth, I'm doing it.
Okay.
One comment, um, Leo, good thing on, 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 uh, the Halloween side is that it's supposed to be breezy, and I think that would help.
And kids have masks?
What do you mean, the breeze, it's not supposed to be breezy that either.
They're all dressed up as doctors.
That will help a lot, because it's kinda like being warm in your, you know?
Yeah.
So we win.
Yeah.
Well, we're going back to the tent, um, I think as Mike and Buck have said, we worried about a large tent where they were actually having a group activity in the tent. If you need a small, you know, ten-by-ten pop-up tent to keep the dew off the bags of the candy, I don't think this board has an issue with that.
Okay.
So other than the grains, the stand out there if you needed.
It, it'd be, it, a public tent like they have described, where you could hang the lights from it, it'd be a little more focal point for every station you have along the way.
Okay.
So I have no issue with that, but it isn't one people congregating under a larger tent.
Right, we're just concerned with the fact that if it was organized, you know, it'd be like when they showed the movies, and they had the popcorn or
Yeah.
whatever there is, that everybody ends up, let's face it, kids have friends in school, they cluster together.
Yeah.
You know, and so it's kinda hard to keep people out.
Yeah, no movies, no movies.
So.
So, so the, the other part of this is, uh, I think, Lee and Padan was the winter holidays, do you want me to address that?
Sure.
We, we've kind of got it fleshed out. Um, so the same with last year, that came the year before, I forget how many, is this the second year? I don't know. But anyway, uh, I think there's sixteen trees left out there now, so we'd still like to wrap those in the white lights and probably going up the branches a little bit, like we did last year, and, um, the balcony of the town hall. And, uh, we would like to wrap the trees as soon as possible because it's getting very cold. Last year we did it, and it was like very hard wrapping the trees in the cold. And, and then, um, on December fourth, uh, we would decorate, um, the ten, the, the bandstand, um, just the railings around with some icicle lights and garland, and put up the Christmas tree. And then I think Enid has talked to Fred Mullin, he's going to be Santa Claus. And he'll, I think he's going to walk in or just come on, uh, a sleigh if Tom, um, can get together. And that's, and then that's when we would like the common up, on, um, twelve-four, in the evening.
Okay.
And we'd like to, if that's okay, we'd like to leave the lights up till the end of February.
Jesus.
There's a little problem with that.
Well, and then, um, well, we'll, I'm, I'm, the board, I mean, the selectmen will tell us when they'll want us to.
Yeah, I think we, we showed that up last year, what was the date we did last year?
Well, actually, we let them keep it last year, but we would had said right after the first, sometime after the first. Cause you got people that live in town that like seeing the moonlight out here, not all the lights, so.
Thank you for coming.
It's kinda sharing the winter, I guess, so we were thinking of doing that this year is, uh, remember right after the first of the year, then.
Yeah, I know we had, we, we did have long discussions about it last year, don't remember the dates exactly.
Uh, I think last year, um, it was the end of January, I believe, and then, I think Don came and asked to extend it because that was to support some group across the United States, and then that was okay, but, um, I mean, it's up to you, I mean, you, you're, you know, you, you tell us what we could do to the end of January, and then unplug them. Um, uh, the Christmas tree will come down January first, you know, after January first. Uh, but the lights on the, on the bandstand will stay on. Now, I did talk to all of the neighbors uh, around the common and across the street, and, uh, we talked about the lights, and they were fine with the lights. Uh, there was only, um, as I shared, I think, going back maybe a month ago when I was here, that Ann, uh, Zeller said we had flashing, I don't know, snowflakes or something a couple of years ago, and she didn't like those, and so, of course, we would respect that. Um, so that's our plan for the lighting of the commons of the school.
So December fourth. What are you guys' thoughts, um, first of January or the end of January?
I compromise, go right in the middle.
January fifteenth, fish.
January fifteenth?
Yeah, we'll see, but you're gonna keep the lights on till ten at night, right?
Yeah, there'd be a timer on there.
Okay.
Yeah, it should go on, from dusk to ten o'clock.
Sure.
You know, and, um, i- if Ann was around, she would usually say, if one of the, the timers weren't working properly, she would just give us a call and we'd come down and fix it. So January the fifteenth, is that what you think?
Yeah, I wanna hear from one over another.
Well, um, actually, I don't like any of that myself, but that's me, okay? And I know a lot of people are so concerned about that, but, okay, it's not my call. But, um, a couple of things, one is the, that, those porticos, what are those roofs of like, on those porticos? What are they, are they rubber roofs?
I think it is a rubber roof.
So my, my point here is that, um, as nice as they think it might look, um, we just paid a lot of money to handle those roofs and pier. You don't know if it's leaking till the damage is done.
Well, they're not getting up on the roof from it.
Yeah. How long are they gonna, how long are they gonna get up there and, and decorate the rails?
I would like to do that from a ladder from outside, but.
They're all people in their seventies.
So you guys climbed out the window?
Um, I, I can say I, Enid and I climbed out the window and did it.
So.
Yes, and, and, and we are, you know, up there, but we're quite capable.
Well, that's not, um.
I know you're talking about the roof.
I'm, no, I'm talking about climbing the ladders, is, they're not, we're not young people here. You know, your riding club are not, is not made up of young people, that's what I'm getting at, not trying to insult you, believe me. Because I'm up here myself, you know? My, my point is people walking on that roof, it could, uh, puncture that roof, make a hole in it, you don't see that until we have damage, and then we gotta pay to fix it again. So to me, if you had a bucket truck up there, that'd be one thing, but to walk out on that roof doesn't make any sense. Just put a few lights up, you know, maybe they can just forego that part, and, you know, they have the trees that, you know, weigh.
I haven't, I haven't paid too much attention to what that roof is up there.
Uh, it's a rubber roof, it's in good condition, and, yeah, we could definitely take our shoes off.
Well, that's not the shoes, it's just walking on it, you know, you.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's a rubber roof, it doesn't take much to puncture it, if you just hit the right spot, I, I know it's happened many times before, I see it, I've repaired them, you know? And so, like I said, you have seepage of water getting in here that nobody will notice, and then eventually you gotta have somebody up and repair this. And we just paid, I don't know, how many thousands of dollars to have that repaired, just a few years back.
It's been two years, yeah.
Yeah.
Also, um, Tom does have a bucket truck, so we could use that.
But then you gotta drive that up on the lawn.
Yeah.
This doesn't make sense, just for that, that area, to just take a chance the roof comes.
I guess I'd like to just take a look at the rubber roofs to see if it's, see what the conditions are and see if they're, some of them are real thick or, and some are thinner. Like Leo said, some can get damaged really easy, and some are a lot more heavy duty, and I don't know what that roof is.
It's not an idea, the weight, believe me, I'm not getting it off.
Well, I'd love to check it out.
Yeah, right, you go up and check it, it's on the week. Just to have ballast on it, is there ballast on it at all?
I didn't see it, and I know it's a very thick rubber.
Yeah, but I mean, is there any stone on it?
No, no.
So because if there's ballast on it, that's even worse.
No, I didn't see any of it.
I'm just making a point, that, you know, just for a few lights, you know, my three thousand of dollars in future, I don't think.
I'll go and take one, get it, Mark.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I speak on the lights?
No.
Please?
Yeah.
I'm a taxpayer.
Okay.
And I just want you to know that I am for all the lights, because I'm, um, I've known and heard people that say that they get depressed in winter, and the lights have really perked up. Someone who may not get a lot of time in the daytime, but come through the commons and see the lights, and to me, I think is a very positive thing. Even the office staff leaving here when it's dark at five o'clock, at six o'clock at night, we enjoy seeing that, and I've never heard any comments, any negative comments from the office staff here, it's very, very pretty, I make an effort to go around the common to look at it before I get on the other go.
Okay, so.
So I'm just saying.
Uh, again, I think it's like Goff Town and concrete classy in the middle here, but, okay, that's just my thoughts, and like I said, a few people have spoke to me. But, you know, I, I don't know how many people, how many members you have in the club?
We have sixty-three as of today.
Okay, so I, my thought was, uh, wouldn't it, if you're doing it for the people to cheer them up and everything, wouldn't it be a good thing for the garden club to have a contest within the garden club to, to decorate your homes and have a winner? So that way, everybody decorates their homes, and people can see them throughout the town.
Well, that, that's something I'll bring up, maybe not this year.
That would make sense to me, cause that, and it's everybody's homes, and if I wanna go see it, I'll drive out there, and see it, and kids, people will take their kids to see them. Just like when I was a kid, they'd take us to the city and see the lights, but, you know, I mean, to just have them all in one area, and as I said last week, um, it used to be that you drove through town, you could see the serene look of the, uh, the bandstand, the lights on, Christmas tree lit, and you could see the background was all nice snow on, on the town common, it looked beautiful, it looked serene, and now it's just like a band, it's a big mess.
Well, one, one thing we are doing, Leo, is we're limiting the time on it a little bit, so.
Right, I understand.
We're taking a month and a half away from them, so.
My, my point is, if you really wanna decorate the town, that's the better way to do it, if they, they got sixty-one members.
Right.
So if there's decorating their own homes and everything, and people can go out and look at that and see that, it'd be really nice.
Well, it's a good idea.
I, I do like that idea, and, uh, I think that would.
You have to buy it from me.
Uh, I, and I would definitely, uh, share that with the members for next year, absolutely, I think I love that idea.
My, my father had to take us into Manchester, see the lights, cause back then, you drove five miles an hour into Goff Town?
Yeah.
There's only six or seven houses.
That's right.
That's why we like the darkness so much.
Like in Fentlock and that, you, you don't see the houses until the trees are, the leaves are off the trees, you know, most of them.
Houses are way far back.
The leaves are off the trees at Christmas.
Okay, so, um, twelve-four to one fifteen?
Yeah, and you'll check the roof and let me know?
I will.
All right, thank you.
Don't get so greedy, I'm trying not to. Business test. Okay, um, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Appreciate the update on it, keep us in touch.
All right, thank you.
Full-size candy bars?
Oh, yeah, the candies, we'll do that tomorrow.
I'll push you off the button, so, next week, so we can get some information on them.
Is that correct, Paul? You wanna move on from that?
Yeah, you're gonna, I think it's gonna be sometime in November, cause, yeah. I think that's when we did it last year, too.
Yes, she was just trying, because we're meeting every week now, to keep some things going.
Right, but what I'd like to do is, I circle that, I put in parentheses, the paragraph you can read, so that when you're looking at these numbers, it's not the true number, cause the true number's in that paragraph, this is what I'm, Michael, and I'll give you a copy too.
I'll give you mine, I'll just make a copy.
Cause when you're looking at what the numbers are, it's actually two point six. Cause when you're looking at what the numbers are, it's actually two point six.
If you don't mind, I'll make a copy.
No, you can keep that, I have, I have some.
You have some?
Yeah, oh yeah, I got more than I needed.
Okay, um, as you said last week, we, um, are developing a time clock policy for the transfer station employees. Um, Lee sent us out a copy and we had made a couple adjustments on it this week. So we're gonna start with, um, this policy here. Alternative select, I've had a chance to review it this week, so. Um, we'll pass this around to get signatures on it.
As far as the housekeeping, I, I recommend with Lee that this just be provided to all those people to fax. And have the next publishing of the work of our first own guy, then it be inserted.
Yeah. Cause we just printed up.
So you're handing it to them now for them?
Correct, and have them sign off on it.
And when will the machine be in?
It's already in, that's why, yeah, it came in yesterday, they report. And I asked Woody to just maybe give it a week's, um, trial. And continue the same time sheet of work with the time clock to see how they can, you know.
Make it work.
Make it work, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Lee to speak on this, she's worked on the MS five thirty-five this week, and I have her here to sign the final copy.
Okay, so our auditor has completed our financial statement, which is the Department of Revenue Reform, MS five thirty-five. Which is the report of the, uh, towns', um, financials. To allow us to set the tax rate. And, um, everyone has a copy in front of them. And I went over this with our auditor, um, he did find some things that he felt through their auditing firm. That they were going to reclassify, um, which is acceptable by the Department of Revenue. And in each one of those key, um, areas, he did put an explanation, so. Where he has set like six other towns in the last few weeks, um, these were questions that came up from the Department of Revenue. So he, at this point, is, uh, being proactive in making sure that the explanations are there. So, um, for example, if you, uh, the first section of the MS five thirty-five are the expenditures.
Is that the, to, to date?
No, this is based on two twenty twenty expenses. So, uh, what, the five thirty-five.
So the twenty twenty-one MS five thirty-five is actually the twenty twenty expenditures?
And revenues, correct, and what, uh, one thing that's also included in here, which, um, kinda skews some of the numbers. Are warrant articles, uh, unanticipated revenues, unanticipated, um, expenditures. Uh, for example, if you turn to page four, I have highlighted, um, forty-nine oh two. And he has ta- taken liberty of putting in explanation one sixty-six, five sixty-five. Agents to expend, and what that, two hundred and forty-five thousand seven ninety actual expenditures. Is an article nine, uh, nine, two thousand nineteen highway truck that was backordered. And because we spent it in twenty twenty, we have to report it as an expenditure in twenty twenty. So it's an expenditure out of capital outlay. Okay, and then also the, uh, DRAs changed some of the formatting for reporting revenue. Uh, the forty-nine oh three explanation is for grants and donations, so those, um.
What were the appropriations for that truck?
It was actually on the warrant in two thousand nineteen, but because it was backordered and we only awarded the, um, bid on December thirty-first of two thousand nineteen. We didn't take possession of it until twenty twenty, so therefore it creates an expense in twenty twenty. And then you'll see in, uh, a few pages further along, that it's reported as revenue. Because we took money from the Capital Reserve to pay for the expense. That's standard process for reporting your financials. The, uh, forty-nine oh three under buildings is a general area that doesn't usually have a voted amount on. But all those thirty-one ninety-fives that I've had over the year for the board to accept. Whether it's for Rees Across Dunbar, for the Police Department tasers, for gifts to the Welfare Department. All of that combined is listed as actual expenditures, which then further in the report shows an offset of expenses. Or revenues coming in to cover that.
What page are you talking about?
So I, I was referencing to number four, but then if you go to the revenue side, on page six.
I don't see all those expenditures you were just talking about, the page four, middle of page.
Page four, middle of page is, um, expenses, two hundred and forty-five nine seventy under forty-nine oh two?
Yeah, I saw the chart, so you're talking.
Okay, and the one right below it is all of those expenses that we incurred from gifts that we received over the year. So there's a revenue side, but you have to report that you had an expense that was covered from a different source, a different revenue, a different, uh.
Hey, where do you have those broken down after, like, say, uh? You have them broken down somewhere else so the audience can see them later?
He is the one that put that together and that is actually shown, um. Uh, restating, um, beginning balance, I believe that's one of them, a twenty-two seventy on the, uh, page seven. And then, um. Show that revenues, it's also part of the two twenty-five, three thirty-seven on page six. So, um, there's always like re- recategorizing monies that weren't as part of the projected revenues. But we received them as gifts, special revenues, concre- concreted in, in the laws. So he, um, what Brian told me was that the previous auditing firm did things a little bit differently. But some of the things that they had to note on our, uh, financial this year. Was to recategorize them so that they're clear and they follow the guidelines of the Department of Revenue.
I mean, you see all those empty lines, I know you would think that we could have room to categorize that stuff.
Yeah, I don't know how.
So you could follow it.
Yeah.
One thing on the top of this MS five thirty-five. When it says estimate revenues and actual revenues, can you put twenty twenty there? Or can you not opt for this form?
This is a DRA form, that's all set. And even, and it's funny that you're saying that, cause I asked, uh, uh, the same question about the very last page. I said, what's the negative twelve thousand five hundred and sixteen difference? And he said, it actually is nothing, he said, it's a, uh, it's a, something that's prompted through the formula of the, of the form. And he said, it really should be zero and they have no way of explaining, explaining why that number is there, but it's really, it doesn't apply to anything.
And is it software glitch, in other words?
I don't know, but he said that basically the general fund balance sheet reconciliation clearly says that the, uh, we're in, um, balance. We have the two, two eighty-five sixty-nine and the two eighty-five sixty-nine. But I do wanna point out to you to page seven. At the very bottom. Those are the ones that we'll be setting the tax rate with, I do have an appointment tomorrow at one o'clock to set that tax rate. So, uh, he also wanted to point out to me that the, uh, assigned fund balance is, um, typically reserved for, um, the non-lapsing warrants. Uh, any Capital Reserve that hasn't been expended yet. One thing that he did, uh, allocate into this fund, when you see it went from eighty-eight thousand up to two forty-eight. Is he recategorized, uh, what I, um, give you a breakdown on, on another sheet, is, um. He pointed out to me that the overlay that we set at tax rate seven from the end of the year actually lapses at the end of each year.
Eversource.
Yeah, so what, at, what I was, um, working with the auditor in two thousand nineteen's audit. I had a questionnaire that, um, I was given by the auditor without any real explanation. But they asked me to generalize if there is any outstanding BTLA, um, um, pending. And I brought up the fact that we had the eversource pending, and they asked me to give my best case scenario of what we might have to pay out. But also not knowing and understanding the true effect of an abatement that's been pending since two thousand fourteen. I gave them some round numbers that came up to the fifty-eight thousand four sixty-seven. So in two thousand nineteen, they actually recategory, restated, or basically encumbered some overlay money. Into a category on their five thirty-five in two thousand nineteen, but.
Previous firm?
Previous firm, and with that, Brian and I discussed it and he explained to me that even though. That of all these years from two thousand thirteen to twenty, we had encumbered or overlaid. A hundred and twenty-eight thousand six, eight hundred fifty, sixty-five, which is the remaining number after what was paid out to abatements. To local abatements. What he explained to me was that money actually lapsed into the general fund because we had not been allocating or encumbering. They don't use that wo- that term, they use it restating, so they basically reserve some of the overlay that you've already raised and appropriated. In twenty twenty-one, going forward, we had budgeted last year fifty thousand in overlay. We actually overspent our overlay by sixty-two thousand dollars. So we're in a negative, and what that does is it spends down your fund surplus.
You overspent by sixty-two thousand?
Because we didn't pay out our overlay in the years that we allocated the monies. It actually gets, lapses into the general fund. And we, last year, because we allocated sixty thousand four twenty-six, we actually overspent that sixty thousand by sixty-two thousand.
Yeah, but if we never put it into the general fund from the previous years, there should be a positive from that line this year.
That's right, it would be a hundred and twenty-eight, but we didn't, we didn't carry it forward. It was only in two thousand nineteen that we carried a small portion of it. After I, I completed a questionnaire of any pending BTLA outstanding. So these other funds from prior year thirteen to two thousand eighteen, those became part of the fund surplus.
And lapsed into the general.
And lapsed into the general fund surplus.
So it still won't be in a negative this year, cause you have a hundred and twenty-eight going on there, right?
Not, that's what it totals up, that we didn't spend, but we didn't earmark it. So what he has done under this page seven. Is he increased the assigned fund balance two hundred and forty-eight five seventy-one. To help offset some of the overlay that was not encumbered in past years. Because we still had, we had fifty-eight thousand four sixty-seven that the two thousand nineteen encumbered. We had thirty-three thousand eight twenty that was remaining from two thousand nine, twenty twenty, that we did not spend down. So he bumped it up to cover.
It was at two forty-eight?
Yeah.
Where are we ending up?
We're going to be shy by about, uh, nine thousand dollars to cover the what we paid out to just in twenty twenty-one to, uh, eversource.
But not following, you're at two forty-eight, you have plenty of numbers you can close with that.
I understand that, but we're in a negative sixty-two thousand because of twenty twenty-one, we paid out. Uh, a hundred and ten thousand and change. A hundred and eleven. And we only budgeted fifty thousand.
You're talking the hundred and nine five eighty-five?
That was just for the, uh, eversource. So going forward now for twenty twenty-two, we have to set the overlay amount for twenty twenty-two. With the projection that we will settle for two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen and twenties, BTLA application to eversource. And if we don't, then we have to be diligent in carrying that monies over into the following year. Cause it lapses into the general fund.
So you're saying we have to restate it?
Restate it, yeah.
So which is similar to like encumbering, but it's, it's terms called restate it, and so we can continue to use it in the overlay. To offset a law, a settlement we get from eversource.
And not have to re-raise and appropriate it again.
But that's gonna end after this year anyway, right?
I don't know, and we have, right now we have pending two thousand seventeen and eighteen, which were calculated using the old methodology. So using the old methodology, we could potentially be liable for twenty thirty, forty, over fifty thousand dollars in refunds, not including the interest.
Which years were done with the methodology that the court agreed with?
Two thousand nineteen and twenty, that's when he implemented.
So those two are done, so you're talking, you've got pending BTLA under all four of the years.
Yeah, I, I just got an application for a BTLA appeal for twenty twenty from eversource.
And so it's won't let go, right?
And even if, if the new methodology's been implemented, they're still going to file an abatement. Cause that's just what they do. So we have four years pending.
So the Full Employment Act for lawyers, we work for eversource.
So, last week I discussed.
This is very messy to look at.
I know, I'm sorry, it came up at the last minute, I was discussing this with, uh, our auditor. And I wanted to point out the different highlights that he drew on and, um, was discussing with me. Only because I thought that it would be thirty thousand that we decided for overlay would be adequate and I wanted that, um, I spoke to him about it again today.
What I'm looking at is when you've got two forty-eight, five seventy-one as an ending balance on your twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty-one MS five thirty-five, which is twenty twenty.
Yeah, that's not including just overlay, I mean, uh, yes, it's not including just overlay, it's for other warrants that have encumbered.
All those other warrants we proved, the capital improvements and all that, okay?
And non-lapsing.
Non-lapsing, that's all part of that.
Well, if I can't see them, I don't know what the balance is, so it's hard to tell.
Yeah, um, but this is the, this piece we need in order to set the tax rate. And he will, he will go over all of this information in detail with the, um, the final audit in twenty twenty. And this isn't just the balance.
When is that gonna come out?
He is coming in for the second week of November, and because this is, uh, a big, big part of it, it's gonna be more of the testing. And, uh, they feel they anticipated January to be complete, but he thinks it's gonna be before the end of the year. Because they got farther ahead.
When we look at that assigned fund balance.
Yeah, yeah.
It would help us if we had, um, and I know it's not part of this form, but we have a breakdown of those different amounts, so we can.
And he will, and in our final.
Take them and subtract on it.
Yeah, in, in the final audit, they will give that more of a detail on that. Um, where I was getting it is the board had authorized a thirty thousand dollar overlay. Uh, he said that it would be very wise for us to, uh, go back to the fifty thousand originally recommended. Only because, um, the uncertainty of those four years of, um, eversource appeals.
See, I'm looking at, you, you need to pay now and pay later. If you pay later, uh, it's gonna, potentially, if we get stuck holding the bag, uh, when, when, when eversource wins, when they're making it against us. Uh, then we'd have to go to the taxpayers and raise tax, make a spike in the tax rate.
Not really, cause we always have excess funds typically, the one we've been budgeting.
And the rainy day fund, yes, but the thing is, uh.
Not just, I'm not talking rainy day fund, I mean.
When they're. So we always have. But the thing is, I, I guess they're asking, instead of thirty, they put fifteen, and they're based upon, uh, we have two outstanding years in which, uh, under the old method. They, they came out favorably. And I think so as a good risk for the next two years, the twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen budgets, they could prevail and get money from the town and, 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 and make it. And so that's what's pending, and last year we had a, we, we, and their payment, we only budgeted sixty and they had the old, uh, hundred. And that was over how many years?
Uh, that was just for four years.
Four years, so, so fifty thousand dollars would probably be enough to cover a good portion of the abatement for eversource and any other abatement that may come before the one.
So originally Dave, when I did this spreadsheet, I was putting what? The town agreed to refund in twenty twenty-one, we just paid this last March, this past March. I put those numbers, a twenty-six thousand and a nine five in column fourteen. And then, uh, year fourteen, and then I did the same for, uh, year fifteen, and then my ending balance was in a negative. Okay, so then when they, uh, the auditor said, no, you can't do that, we, we paid it in twenty twenty-one. So it is affecting this calendar year and the only amount that we have, um, restated was the fifty-six thousand dollars. You see what I'm saying? So then I took them out of fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, and I moved them to the last column here. So that you can see the true what we spent this calendar year, which is accurate. And that's when Brian explained to me that all these other funds, which would have been. A hundred and twenty-eight thousand actually lapsed into the fund surplus.
If I could explain one more thing, look, if you look at the sheet here, look at those individual years. Each year, it's almost like, um, uh, include the interest, it's almost like thirty, uh.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four thousand dollars, just to one entity for abatement.
Yeah.
And so we're leaving only fifteen thousand dollars for other abatements around town.
Right.
And originally, we had, we had recommended thirty thousand dollars for abatements without including the eversource in there. I include the eversource in there, we're basically protecting the residents from any spikes and increases in taxes. And the thing is, it's, it's not allowing us to run into the rent or have to draw upon your. And the thing is, it's not allowing us to run into the, or have to draw upon your rainy day fund, because.
Right, so the way the auditors have explained it is that this isn't just a best guess, your overlay. And the board in the past would set that at two thousand or three thousand dollars on an average. And what happened is when you overspent that projected overlay, you spent down your surplus.
I don't understand the whole scenario, but we reduced it this year because we're past most of those years where Eversource is gonna win in court because the court's already come to a determination that our new calculations are correct, so. With the exception of two more years.
So seventeen, eighteen.
Yeah, the thing is, uh.
I don't want to make it fifteen, but we've got to get, so when we're looking at these numbers, we know what's underneath that underlying number, so we can see what's in there and not in.
Yeah, the financial statement will give us a break, more of a breakdown.
It's also the town report, I mean, I know it's the town report, but you, when, if I wanted to get a quick snapshot, I'd go to the town report where we have the different, say, buckets of money, which is, in other words, that's part of our five percent, but part of our five percent is included in some of those reserves, you might say.
Right, so after, after you look at that assigned fund balance, which is the two hundred forty-eight, that covers your field, your overlay, and.
Capital improvement funds.
Capital improvement funds. The unassigned fund balance is nine hundred and thirty-five thousand seven sixty-nine, which is what the Department of Revenue will be looking at. But this past March in two thousand twenty-one, the board is using two hundred ninety-five thousand eighty-two dollars because that's how we set our operating budget. We anticipated excess operating budget and excess revenue from the projected number. So of that nine thirty-five, she'll be deducting two ninety-five because that's how it was written in the article, and it was passed.
Yeah, so she deducts that from there, nine thirty-five, we're at six hundred.
Six forty roughly, six thirty.
Okay, and where are we at, six forty on our rainy day fund last time?
No, we were just over five, and that's why we kept thirty thousand of the revenues and expenses to try to bring us over that five percent mark. So I think we're still gonna be above five percent.
What else have we taken out?
Um, fifty thousand for overlay.
So we're in range. Right, six forty, we should be well above the five.
And that's correct, yeah, because last year we were, we were trying to reserve five hundred and forty thousand to get to five percent roughly, is that a number that we were working with?
The thing is, it's, it's a moving, the overlay, I mean, the five percent is always a moving target. As, as revenues grow for the town, and we get more houses built, and we collect more revenues, our percentage has gotta be higher, so it's a moving target.
I understand that. So when it comes to that five percent, I did not say three, three hundred thousand that kind of.
So if you're okay, I am setting the tax rate tomorrow with the D M R, and I'd like to increase that thirty thousand up to fifty thousand.
Okay, I'll sign the copy. To protect us from any potential negative outcomes with Eversource winning their abatement.
Correct. And in the event they don't win, then the funds lapse, and then they will go away, and you don't have to restate it or re, yeah, you don't restate the balance.
Brian, are you on it?
Yeah.
But we're, we're, for the next two years, there's, we're under the old system, you might see, and they have prevailed under the old system.
Unless we settle next year, and so here we'll have what has been restated in reserve plus the fifty thousand.
Okay, that's it for our regular, we go to the mail box.
You had two copies, did you want one of these copies back?
No.
Those are Bob's, they're strong, right?
I'm gonna use my draw. And I apologize for the messy, but it was the only way that I could give you this form and speak on it, to be able to point out certain things.
Yeah, that's fine, you're already through the mail box. That was good, thank you, Leanne, for all the work on that. For this way, I called yesterday, talked just about it, in conversation with him. He's, can't talk, expecting a call from the auditors, don't, don't mess with me. I shut my phone call, bye, goodbye.
Okay, we talked about this earlier, on Don Larson, got a letter here from Eversource, thanking him for what he's doing for the veterans and putting the flags up, and giving them permission to do that. I made a quiet joke that I can have my selectmen signs on there too.
Just a joke, boy.
We have a department update from, from the transfer station from our manager down there.
I gave you all a copy because it came in late in the mailbox, I wasn't sure if anyone had, everyone had a chance to read it.
I will read mine later, so I'm not gonna hold off the board for it. My head's stuck down this week, and Eddie was actually working, it looked like it was kinda what, he's coming in this Saturday. Everything seemed to be going okay down there while I was down.
My points, in fact, I went to both things down, the, the takeback from Hazus, it was very smooth, I had eight minutes in line to drop off my stuff. Really slick operation.
Dave, I think in the, the transfer station update, there's a request from him, I don't know.
Okay, I'll go through, read it quick here then. I'll give you a little update on it, the takeback that Mike was just talking about, it was a success here. Here's some numbers, Dunbar had eight more cars than last year, putting our total number of cars to seventy-eight, or twenty-point-four percent of the whole day, so that's a pretty good turnout. Bow had fifty-four fewer cars than last year, putting their total at three hundred and five, or seventy-nine-point-six percent. The roof panels are in, so the contractor is gonna be installing those on Friday, ten twenty-nine. Those are the replacement translucent panels. Boots for the employees at the transfer station, Highway Department, I'm asking the board to reconsider allowing the employees to spend up to a hundred and seventy-five dollars on boots. For as long as I can remember, it has been a hundred and fifty, as like everything else, boots have gone out from my department. Talking about additional a hundred and twenty-five, when we are staffed with five employees. I have this money in my budget, thank you. I will say, everything else is going up, so I possibly couldn't believe them if boots aren't going up. I don't have a big issue with them going up to one seventy-five. Especially since he has the money in the budget.
Yeah, the problem I have is that it's more than five pair of boots a year, right? You know, and, and you can't get boots for a hundred and fifty. And we raised that a few years ago.
Yeah.
In fact, we just instituted it under my tenure.
Two, yeah.
We just instituted it under my tenure, we weren't gonna make it to one fifty because it wasn't enough, you know, and so.
If you're using sole source that's coming to the transfer station, you're gonna have to pay what the person's carrying.
I think the reason why that was developed initially was to offset the cost to the employee, not to necessarily pay for a pair of three. Originally, because there wasn't a dollar amount in the personnel policy, it depended on who bought what and what type of boot they would come down with.
There was a discussion on when we made that one fifty, we wanted to make sure the safety policy, they were able to get a pair of boots for that rate. I don't know, I think it's twenty-five dollars per guy, I don't think it's a huge deal. That's just my own thoughts on it. So we can go either way on it, Mike, how was your feeling towards it?
I, I thought it was a, a supplement to what they were offering, a hundred and fifty dollars a lot for safety boots. I mean, I can go down to like anywhere, Sears Roebuck can buy a pair of safety boots, it doesn't have to be Sears or clothes.
Yeah, good one, I was gonna catch that.
No, but the thing is, uh, but the thing is, a hundred and fifty dollars is still a lot of money for boots, the thing is, um, when you go, a vendor that comes to you, you're gonna pay John Dollar.
You know, we guys keep saying that, but I'm not sure that's the case, if it's the vendor or not.
Well, the thing is, I like to defer that, go online, see what I can find boots for, I'll look into that this year.
Yeah, just so happens I was out shopping for boots yesterday.
You're working for the transfer station?
And steel-toed boots, very good brands, a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty, easily, easily. They're not cheap brands, they're a good brand.
We're saying we're gonna go up a little bit?
Hmm?
We should go up a little bit?
No, I'm saying, I, I saw these boots for a hundred and twenty-five, I mean, a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty dollars, good boots, not crappy boots. Carolinas, you know, what do you call it, Timberlands, you know, good boots.
Okay. Well, then, be set then.
What's Bob on, you think Bob's not on?
He already told us.
You know, I understand Woody has a problem with wearing, because he made that statement when we had, uh, talks on forum, and he said that he can't fit into, you know, for that amount of money, that he's, he's, has a special shoe, I guess.
Dan, can I just say that Pete buys his own boots, and he gives us a receipt, he says a hundred and eighty dollars, refund him a hundred and fifty. And he's okay with that because he's getting a hundred and eighty-dollar pair of boots for thirty dollars.
You got it.
Okay.
I'm just.
Um, we're gonna go on to the next subject. I am looking for permission to report how Shan, Libby, my daughter, commit on Saturday to sort and package off a tire from H H W D. This is for one day. I'm not asking for her to be a regular employee. I'm not, I'm not familiar with the terminology, H H W D?
Household, household wastage day, the stuff that he took back from Bo, he had to bring back to the transfer station.
Why did he have to take our stuff back?
I don't know what the, what the whole thing was.
I didn't know if he, was he asking for her to go work down there like you?
No, here, the stuff that we brought to the transfer station, I believe. There are certain things that they don't take at that, but there's stuff that they collected, and now they have to repackage it or package it out for her.
I don't have a problem, it's actually been an improved employee down there before. He has it in his budget.
My only concern is like, it's his daughter, and you got other, you know, his daughter's working among other people who are working down there, again, it's minimum wage, we have no problem with that, but the thing is, I just wanna make sure that is the only duty she's doing, that she's not working the car that, because she's not sorting, because he is not tasking her to do other things, and the thing is, then you gotta have, why is your daughter doing that in favors? I wanna protect Woody from having any accusations of him that you're putting in favors because his daughter is.
He's very clear on just what he's doing.
Yes, but the thing is, we gotta make him be emphatic about that, she's only to work that, not to work the recycling, not to work the compactor, or anything else. Because once you do that, you cross the line, and you put Woody in the danger of being accused of something, and I wanna protect Woody, I don't want him to get down that path. Bob, you have thoughts there?
Yeah, I don't have a big problem. As long as it doesn't impact anyone else's hours, they don't have work in there, that's the only thought I have.
Right, but I don't want her to be substituted for working the compactor, for example. That's not, we're, we're having.
It looks like just, just doing that one.
You gotta be emphatic about that. Leanne, you got the word emphatic?
One day.
Well, and only work in the hazardous waste day materials.
For that purpose, okay.
H H W D.
So I don't wanna go on this avenue, she's unloading my trash into the compactor.
That's, they're not supposed to touch your trash anyway right now.
Well, that was last week, it changes from week to week.
What, like sending the board, fire, what kind of shelving, each truck? I've heard anything back from the board.
He might have said it in another department update.
Yeah, I think he did.
Can we take that out of, um, is that voting, he had his voting line?
I don't know, she's got the money in her budget.
Not voting line, I'm talking, he's talking the COVID money, I think, right, because it's voting. You know, we bought that container under that too.
We could, we tried COVID money in that, but.
I just wanted to forewarn you that I'm already being warned that any of these monies we get in a calendar year expire at the end of the year, so.
We gotta use it now, is it what you're saying?
Did we get COVID this year, or we just get it last year? I thought we got it last year.
Okay, I thought we got some early in the year, mid-year too.
About fourteen thousand, did we get that this year?
Is it storage of some of those, all the Plexiglas, all those Plexiglas, what do you, what do you, Dave, about the Plexiglas in there?
Um, I was in there just the other day because I had to measure the boxes there, and they had the tables and stuff for the original boxes, and they had to, they had everything stacked in the boxes, I'm not sure where the shelving would really.
I know Linda likes to keep the boxes because it keeps the, the equipment from getting dirty and scratched or.
Agreed, I'm not against them getting some shelving, because it is all stacked and piled there, but.
Can I, I'd like to give the, uh, give the authority to the town administrator to authorize her for about the five hundred dollars expenditures for such system. Work with the transfer station.
Have Linda take a look and see what things she could use?
No, I think it would be the transfer sta, transfer station manager.
Managing the equipment, when you're in there.
Yeah, just shelving for, uh, storage.
I have no problem with just the consensus going with it, given, we don't have to have to come back to the board for this much money.
No.
You're okay with that, just let him go up to five hundred?
Yes, and I would like to get permission to get a price on having a wheeled rack made with stanchions used in voting time. A wheeled rack would be able to slide out of that container onto the ramp of our new transfer station truck, and they could bring this stuff in, so.
He should look at Don Larson's stand for the flags, boy, he'd make a nice stand.
If he's, um.
Wheels and everything.
If he's, um, looking at shelving, and therefore he's gonna be on a rolling rack, then we would skip the shelving.
Okay.
Okay, so just let, we'll authorize up to five hundred dollars for one or the other, if he's gonna make a rolling rack, then everything should just stay on the rolling rack. Unless they're gonna fill it up a couple times.
Yeah, maybe more than, we'll see.
But if he, can you come back and give us more stuff on that?
Some prices on it?
Well, just concept, concept of the operation, what's, how's it gonna be utilized?
Yeah, if he's gonna fill it up several times and unload it, or what's he gonna do with it? I spoke with the manager DS regarding training class that was set up and paid for for the town for Matt. Terris said that we need to get back a signed letter from Matt saying that he would not be attending the class.
That's almost impossible, the thing is, he's not gonna send us a signed letter.
No, 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 I've done it before for him, others have left, so.
Coming from the town administrator?
Yeah.
She also says we're gonna close the towns getting this type of letter from the employer where they are hired. He was trying not to have any overtime this week, however, it looks like they will have some slate overtime this week, so. I asked him to make sure he emails us on there. Um, I know when I was down there midweek, he was hoping to have none this week, because he had I think nine point five hours last week and six point five the week before.
What does he mean by this? She also said that she recommends the town get this, this type of letter from the new employee that they hired? But they're gone, how do you do that?
No, he's saying, when you hire, you put a letter in their thing that says if they're assigned any classes.
Shows when they are hired, yeah.
Yes, when they're hired, you have to sign on the machine.
Yeah.
If they're supposed to go to a class, you can automatically get a, I don't think we need to worry about it.
I think a letter coming from you as town administrator would be more than sufficient.
That's what we've done in the past, because I don't think anyone would wanna sign off on it after they leave.
Okay, so that's done, moving on.
I think you have the one you got.
Yeah, and we did go over, yes, there's a lot of things in there.
Okay.
More than just an update.
Yeah.
Um, we got a notice of the Veterans Day Ceremony here. Um, it's on November eleventh, time is ten forty-five A M to eleven A M, and it's gonna be at the flagpole of the common. It's an outdoor event, and Charles Frost is the contact point.
That's been posted on the website, yeah, I'll put that one up on the.
This isn't the same as the flag day he was talking about?
Yeah.
I think I put that date in my calendar, let me just check.
Yeah, he wanted the selectmen to accept the flags at that ceremony. Accept flags at November eleventh, that's what I have here.
November eleventh, September eleventh, I think it'll be ten thirty, huh? It'll be on time.
I guess his presentation tonight might answer your question about whether he was involved with this ceremony?
Yeah, I think it was fine.
Bob, you gonna put that date down?
Yeah.
Do you wanna copy this right home, Bob?
What's that?
Actually, I'm gonna put that on outside.
Oh, anywhere, I've got it here somewhere.
And then we have a couple of reconciliation forms here to sign.
Twenty.
Twenty. It's flying by, isn't it, ma?
Yeah. Eight minutes, right?
Good answer, Frank. Bob, you're the only one that has a left on that one.
I'll leave these right in the mailbox. Lean, you'll grab them out here?
I will, yeah.
Gotta enter a couple of dates.
Did you sign to manifest and?
I did.
That you missed?
I don't know if those were in there. I don't remember.
Yeah, they were.
I plan for.
You did sign.
You didn't have an afterwards, no?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. I think that's it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, wait. Do you have any for us, Lean?
I'm gonna set the tax rate one o'clock tomorrow and requirement one o'clock or earlier if he finishes the other four tax rate settings before me. And hopefully by shortly thereafter, I'll have some official tax rate to put into the computer and I'll be working with the tax collector to get the warrant and the tax bill's ready. So it'll be in the mail probably next few days.
We'll leave you alone. Don't rush right now.
You still have thirty days to pay.
Leo, I forgot to open up the public one last time. Do you have anything?
No.
Bob?
No, I don't have anything. That's what you're supposed to tell me. Mr. Remind, Lean watch emails for volunteers across America, volunteers.
Oh, for the response, the response.
November fifteenth, they may be contacting you maybe a day or two before or they're after. November fifteenth, put that on the calendar.
It was, I have nothing left for the board. It was nice to have a week without a known public.
I thought the garden club is doing a, a, a reason, working with us. I applaud it.
Oh, I do have one I think to bring up. I was at that meeting last night. I spoke with Edith because they have the, they already had their concert for the second floor there. That went very well. They've got somewhere between five and seven hundred dollars worth of donations from those concerts that they did. So it was a quick bit of donations. Both of the bands that played donated most of their money back.
Do they, you're gonna have a warrant this year or?
That would be me and we're hoping we do have a warrant.
Warrant, I have a, I have a warrant, but I have one also.
Yeah, the plans are eighty-five to ninety percent complete. They're waiting for some structural information from Jeff.
He was here today. He got keys.
He was, okay?
Yeah.
So I knew he had already gotten several phone calls from them, so I didn't duplicate their efforts. When those plans are back, they're gonna develop the request for pricing with us and probably work with them on the overlay, so it may well work for you. And those will go out to get accurate prices so that we can have an accurate budget. And then we'll have a public meeting scheduled after that, which Dennis Myers will present. And then Dennis Myers is planning to come to our town if we have a warrant article on that amount and address the whole thing, gives display. So that's all part of that forty-five thousand, which five thousand is getting credited back because Jeff is voluntary to do the structural on there that they are paying for out of their money that they raised. So it's coming along pretty good. Yeah.
I finished up the R F P for the.
What, did you see the plans?
I got the plans. I wanna know which page. It's like thirteen pages. I don't think we need to print off all of them so you can let me know which pages. And I will have a stack of them ready for you. They came out at the walk through. I've already got four responses. They're very grateful that I reached out to them. They will definitely be there. So I think though, I had like nine or ten vendors. Can you still have, give me the?
I called a couple times and I didn't get that, but I will.
Okay. I just wanna make sure they have enough time to, you know, my.
John have any input on the contract?
No, John, he had, one thing with the contract, he wanted to make sure that we worded that they were putting the outside outlet for them to tie into for the fire department.
Yeah.
Which is kind of a, is something that's done on all jobs, as you know, because you have it on your house. But he wanted that right there, so we added that. He said it looked good and he was actually happy with having the water in the basement because then that cistern was full for them to use for an additional hour on that building. So they tie into that because have the pump system in there. They don't have to haul water from anywhere for that hour, so that's.
Not to mention, I'll probably have their tanker full there also.
Right?
To begin.
If anything, it probably is a good thing to have because heaven forbid it be like one of the other towns where they lost their library, you know, for quite a period of time.
Well, Humpkin just lost their library and Haddocker lost their highway, you know? So he was in agreement that regardless of whether that dish gets done on the building, it's good to protect that.
That's right.
Yeah. We had a quick conversation about whether it was the oldest building in town, but apparently this building, Lean showed us, was built before that one. Of course, there was one there before.
Yeah.
But it burned. Actually, there were two there before that, but they burned.
Those were burned, yeah.
So it's a good liability and protection for the town. Once it's complete, we can go to our insurance agent and say, hey, we just added this.
They help me out. I don't think you're gonna discount anymore.
We'd be surprised. That's a big change, right?
The only thing, speaking of the library, I'm just gonna change gears a little bit, like functional library. You know, it's nice that we, people, you know, it's COVID crap. This one is COVID crap. I went out, I think as we exercised social distancing, we wore masks, we got immunizations. And the thing is, they're only allowing five people. Right now, we just would not be enough. This would be forbidden in the library. Five people at a time. You gotta wear a mask. The thing is, to me, it's untenable, the restricting the services of our library to the citizens of this town. I just feel the library trustees gotta get their act together. Well, when they come to find you, they've gotta get a zero vote from me because we have no services coming from that library. And the thing is, for God's sake, my wife's in the book club and the book club has to meet outside because they can't afford to have a little group inside the library. And they've been all immunized. I, I just, it's a little bit, shall we say, over the top. I'll leave it at that. A little men's coffee. I haven't been to a men's coffee because I refuse to go outside and eat a lawn chair outside.
Speaking of that, John came up to me and said, you know, it's getting cooler. He asked about going on the second floor and I said, you know, because we were walking groups up there, they were walking out to look at it coming down. Nobody was staying up there. I said, I didn't agree with them being able to go up there on the second floor and use that for men's coffee.
John, you're talking about?
John Stevens.
I knew it was John, buddy.
All right.
I hear you saying.
Yeah.
For the camera.
Thank you. So what I recommend is, in the entryway there, coming on this backside, we need, we need to take all of the voting stuff out of there now. So there's, there should be an area in there that's allowed. And he said there was some stuff stored in that area and I said, whatever it is, it can either be moved to the storage upstairs or the storage downstairs and be cleaned up.
But you know, some drinking could use. It's called a code.
No, I think it's from what Mary said. It's stuff from the, the committee, the restoration committee.
It should be stored in her hallway.
I believe she said to me yesterday, because I was in the library yesterday, if it was, she said, she's trying to keep it as many as possible, but they got a lot of stuff in there.
I mean, they have stuff upstairs too. They can put it without, you know, but they should be able, if the men's coffee was to be in that front corner, to me, that's a no-brainer.
The restoration committee used to be there when we were under the COVID.
No, I guess they got things that they collected. I don't know what it is. I mean, I didn't look, you know.
Probably signs and pictures and stuff for their tents, but it can go upstairs because.
Okay. And that's all I, I'm not gonna, you know, your place, but.
You know, if it's a sunny day, a coat does work, you know, I mean, I don't know what to tell you. I've been, I bought a few.
Why do we have to, why do we have to heat the library then for no one using the library? You have to keep the heat on for one person in the library? It can be a great, Bob. It's, it's just a waste of money. It's a waste of money what we're doing with the library down this town. I'd say if we only allow five people in there, shut the freaking thing down. They open up one day a week. It's, it's the way that they're being draconian with that. Thing is, yeah, I, I get the shot. And the thing is, and I thought I could go to a restaurant. Now they're telling me, you know, we gotta wear masks again. The thing is, they never took the mask mandate off in there. And five people? I can be more than six feet apart with more than five people in there. It's, it's over the top. It really is. It, it just irks me to no end that we're paying dollars to keep that building heated and functional and a full-time librarian and five people at a time. And she goes on, this will be, on the website, this will be continued on indefinitely. Oh, my God. And they said, as governor said today, COVID, our governor said, COVID's gonna be here for a long time. They gotta wake up and join, come to this twenty-first century.
Well, just like, you know, it's on TV today, there are more cases. But because it's outside, they're social distancing. They learned from last year's functions of being outside. As you said earlier today, Bob, there isn't, it's a lower risk, they call it. Last year was a medium risk, so.
Depending on the size of the crowd.
Right.
Like I say, when they have the organized parties there or, you know, Halloween rallies, the kids are really close together. I've been there in the back, you know.
We had given you permission already to have horse sleigh ride or carriage ride around down here. So she asked if she had to come back and I said, no, we had already given you permission when we did the concerts. But I said, I would like to know that you guys would like put cones out for social distancing and they're gonna wear masks when they're on the, on the sleigh ride itself. And so they're gonna put that all out there and have the people line up and keep the distances between the families and all that, so.
No, I think they're doing a good job.
They're putting some thought into it. They're not just doing it.
Actually, some of the orchards in the questions farm in the Litchfield have been giving rides like that and they limit the number of people that sit in the back. So you've got like half a dozen people at a time and they make the tour and come back, drop them off, pick up and then roll them.
So Steve Isler is doing it and he's gonna give us the insurance certificate. So I guess he's an adjuster during the day or works for an insurance company, so. He's gonna do with the local horses here.
Yeah, so the tree line?
No, it's for the town hall restoration committee. They're doing a fundraiser like they did with the concerts. They come in for those two items. So they're doing, they're doing horse rides, I don't know, around the town, around the school.
They did come in to talk to the board about that? I don't recall.
They did both of them because they already did the concerts.
Oh, they've already done it? Yes, that's right. Nothing going forward.
The hayride hadn't happened yet.
Oh, hadn't happened.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so I had a take.
Okay, that's it. Me too.
I don't know what you think, huh? I don't have any complaints yet.
Motion to adjourn at eight twenty-four.
Say again.
Thank you, Bill.